Good morning, the time is now 9:44 and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of March 10th, 2020 is called to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Hearing none, yes ma'am.
I just have a question, what time do we anticipate it finishing at 4:15?
4:15.
Hopefully then or sooner?
4:15 or sooner.
Yes, because today's election day.
Yes.
And I have to go work at the walls, starting as soon as I can get there, so...
Okay, very good. We will expedite this to the extent possible.
Thank you.
Okay. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda and order of priority? Moved by our board president, seconded by board member Ramos Montini. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. At this time Marilyn will introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
Yes, I'm Marilyn Schneider, I'm the State Board Executive. You've just been listening to Dr. Michael Rice. He is the State Superintendent and serves as Chairperson of the Board. To his left is the Board's President, Dr. Cassandra Albridge. She lives in Dearborn. Pamela, Dr. Pamela Pugh lives in Saginaw. She's the Board's Vice President, she's on her way. The Board's Secretary is Ms. Michelle Fecto, who lives in Detroit. Nikki Snyder, Ms. Nikki Snyder, lives in Dexter. She's a member of the State Board of Education. Next to her, Ms. Tiffany Tilly, who resides in Southfield, she's Board Member. And then the person in the red jacket at the end of the table is Ms. Carol Lawheed. She's this year's Michigan Teacher of the Year. When she's not here, she is teaching English Language Arts and History at Stony Creek High School, which is part of Rochester Community Schools. And across the table, representing the Governor, is Ms. Brandy Johnson. And then next to her is Dr. Judy Pritchett. She's from Washington Township, she's Board Member. And Lupe, Ms. Lupe Ramos Montini, from Grand Rapids, is a Board Member. And next to me is the Board's Treasurer, Mr. Tom McMillan, and he lives in Oakland Township. Thank you.
Thank you Marilyn. Mr. Garant, please begin the introduction of new employees.
My pleasure to introduce Scott Hutchins to the board. He's new to our office of Health and Safety Services, and I would like him to talk a little about his new role here at the firm.
Good morning. My name is Scott Hutchins. As Kyle said, I work in the Office of Health and Nutrition Services as a Medicaid and Mental Health Consultant with particular emphasis on 31N. I started on February 10th, so very excited to be here. My first month, it's been great. I report directly to Diane Golzinski. Prior to this, I served as a Behavior Technician, working one-on-one with students with autism, and 20 years as a Public School Administrator and Teacher in Jackson Public Schools and Marshall Public Schools.
Thank you very much. Dr. Scott Kennick-Schneck.
I have two new employees that I would like to introduce this morning. First is Sheila Yat. Sheila joins us and is working in the Office of Strategic Education. So Sheila, can you come up?
Good morning. Hi, I'm Lassie Kelly, and I would like to say that I am a senior assistant in the Department of Education. I'm a resident of 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 the Department of Education.
Good. And our second new employee this morning is Deborah Belibic. Deborah joins us and is working in the Office of Strategic Education. Deborah, can you please tell us a little bit about yourself?
I live in Sterling Heights, and I love what I'm doing. I'm in the Program Accountability Unit, so I'm working with Terry Chapman and Rebecca McIntyre. And this is like the accumulation of all my previous careers. I started as a teacher, and back in the late 70s, we had a fair number of teachers in Michigan, but we didn't have any support staff for job students. So I went back to college, became a school psychologist, worked in a center-based program in Bloomfield Hills in Oakland County, as a school staff for over 20 years. Then I accepted the role as Supervisor for the program, and here I am now. I love this. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Kiesler.
Good morning, everyone. It is my great pleasure to introduce, I'm going to start with Kathleen Robinson from the Office of Educator Excellence. Kathleen?
Good morning, I'm Kathy Robinson. I'm a data analyst working for the Office of Educator Excellence. Previous to this position, I worked for PD Community Schools for over 11 years, handling human resources and student services. Previously, I was 15 years in the business sector.
Next, we have Michelle Mattson from our Office of Educational Support.
Good morning, I'm Michelle Mattson. I am from Hart, Michigan, up in Oceania County. I came spending 20, almost 21 years with Hart Public Schools, following in my father's footsteps, and was able to land my dream job of being the migrant education consultant here for the department. Happy to be here, thank you.
Good. Do we miss any new employees? Seeing none, thank you very much. Welcome to all of our new employees. If you plan to offer public comment at today's meeting, please complete a form and get it to Marilyn. Forms are available on the table just outside of the boardroom and must be submitted prior to the beginning of the portion of the meeting devoted to public comment. Public comment will begin immediately following the lunch break, scheduled for approximately 1:15 today. Please be here at that time to ensure that you have an opportunity to comment. First item on the committee, the whole agenda is presentation by students from Willow Elementary School in the Lansing School District. In keeping with our tradition to hear from students, we welcome presenters from Willow Elementary in the Lansing School District. They are here to help us celebrate March's Reading Month by sharing their joy and passion for reading and habits they have learned to improve their reading. This presentation is informational and requires no board action. Here to present to us this morning are Anthony Attwater, 2nd grader; Damar Attwater, 3rd grader; Sierra Beard, 3rd grader; Braylon Henke, 2nd grader; James Lilcool Lamp, 3rd grader; Samaria Patterson, 3rd grader; Miguel Rodriguez, 3rd grader; Dr. Bene Hartman, literacy coach/ interventionist; Ms. Jaclyn Gregorica, early childhood interventionist; and Mr. Stephen Lonzo, Principal of Willow Elementary School. And I would be remiss if I didn't also recognize Mr. Sam Sinicropi, our Interim Superintendent of Lansing School District, my former colleague and former MDE employee, and also Dr. Saturnino Rodriguez, the distinguished Lansing School District Board Member, and also my former colleague, both friends. Welcome.
[coughs] Got room? Yep. Big table.
Welcome.
Do I start?
Floor is yours.
Oh, well, listen, this is our first time, so we want to thank you. Good morning, everyone, my name is Stephen Lonzo. I'm the Principal of Willow Elementary, and these are our family members. First of all, I want to say, Dr. Rice, to you, Cabinet, staff, and guests, thank you all for inviting us and allowing us to be a part of your morning meeting. Before I turn it over to the students, I would like to share or leave you with some information about Willow Elementary. So as you begin considering volunteering, especially with March is Reading Month, but every month is Reading Month, but with March is Reading Month, as you begin volunteering, please consider visiting Willow. So I'll leave these so that you can keep us near and dear in your heart, okay? Also, I'm not selling anything, Doc.
It's all good. You do you, Mr. Lonzo.
I would like to leave also just a little information about our March is Reading Month programs happening at Willow. So here I have, this is just an opportunity for members to sign up and come read to a class, or two or three, based on your time schedule. And we will, I can send this to Marilyn if it's okay, to share with the committee for opportunities or times to sign up that are convenient for you. And we also have our 5th Annual Lansing Leaders in Literacy Day event scheduled for March the 27th. And this just gives the community an opportunity to connect with the students in the school and come in to share in literacy with our students. And this is a very scripted event, and so we ask that if you have interest and if the time is available on your schedule, to please sign up. There's an Eventbrite link on the letter, and you can just access the sign-up link by... Thank you so much for considering and for allowing me to share this information. Unfortunately, James Lilcool Lamp and Miguel Rodriguez are not able to make it today due to illness. And so, but we do have the rest of our family members here, the Attwaters, Ms. Beard, Ms. Henke, and Ms. Patterson. We also have a guardian here, a parent here, joining us this morning, as well as Dr. Hartman, who's our literacy specialist and coach, and also Ms. Gregorica, who's also a literacy coach in the Willow Schools. So I will allow you to address all of your questions at this time to the youngsters, the real reasons why we're here this morning, as they would like to... Well, we did have some conversation prior to coming, and we talked about what could we possibly, possibly be talking about there, Mr. Lonzo? So I said, hey, they just want you all to share about your love and your passion for reading, and things that you do and have done to improve your reading skills. So, yeah. Do you want to start?
Hi, my name is Samaria Patterson. My love of reading started at 4 years old, whenever I started making my own little books and little fables. The people who motivate me are my mom and my family, and I have the best principal in the whole wide world.
That was not part of the...
What book did you, what book did you bring? Will you tell anybody?
I brought The Hair and, I brought The Hair and the Tortoise.
Thank you, Samaria.
Hello, my name is Damar Attwater. I... Hi. Very, um, I love reading, and the people who motivated me to start reading did my mom, my brother, and my dad, my whole family. I got the best principal in the whole world. And I brought superheroes, and the real title is supervillains.
Why, why do you like this? What made you choose this book today?
Because it has action and...
Thank you, Damar.
You're welcome.
Anthony, start, Ms....
My name is Anthony Attwater, and I, this is my favorite book, and I love reading good at school, and it helped me, it helped me a lot more better, and, and it's called We Are All Wonders, and funny, and...
Can you share during our conversation that you shared with me? What made you select this book?
It helps, it helps me not bully nobody. I like reading because it helps me, like, understand, like, big words and, like, to help sound them out. I chose this book, Bink and Golly, because it has, like, big words, and it helps me sound them out, to help me get better at reading.
My name is Braylon Henke, and I chose the book Smile because it's funny, because it's a sister and a little sister who, the big sister's always mean to the little sister, which is kind of like me and my sister. And it, it's, like, funny, and I brought this book because I like comic books and, like, they're funny.
So Braylon, are you the younger sister or the older sister?
Younger.
Wanted to confirm that. We have, would either of the two of you like to share our literacy, our literacy folk?
Sure. One of the themes that I heard starting out was family, you know? How did you get involved and so interested in reading, family? And I cannot stress the importance of family literacy, you know, because it's parents who are just as important as the teachers, you know, and continuing to practice those skills that we teach at school, you know, at home. And that's one of the things that we would like to start at Willow as a family literacy center that's in the workings right now.
They, it's a, it's a good theme. It's an important theme.
It's, yes, absolutely.
Hugely important theme. Thank you very much. Any additional thoughts?
This will be my fifth year at Willow, and I've just enjoyed watching some of these kids. I've kind of grown with them as they were in our preschool program, up to our 2nd and 3rd graders, and just seeing them overall change and develop, and in addition, those math and literacy skills that come along with it. And it's always exciting to see them involved in books and to say what they like about it, because it can really take you to a different world. And I enjoy when they like to pick up a book, and on that drop everything in read time, everyone is just sitting quietly and reading a book, because it's a skill they'll take with them for the rest of their life.
That sounds great. And what about library cards? They have public library cards?
Public library cards?
Yeah, they do. So we actually have an event tomorrow night, our Math and Science Night, and I have invited Jill Laboud from the Capital Area District Library, not only because it's March's Reading Month, but to have the opportunity for a table where parents can sign up for a library card, in case some of the families currently don't have access to them, because we want to push that reading, but we want to make sure that they have the resources at home that they need to take outside of school. So if they don't have one yet, when they come to Math and Science Night, they will have the opportunity.
Right. Because one of the themes we, we preach is fam, not just family literacy, but that we're a community of readers, readers, thinkers, learners. So definitely having that card is important.
Thank you, there's no question about that. The whole school?
Dr. Hartman is also an author of children's books.
Okay.
But that, one of the reasons why I'm looking forward to the summer is so that I have time to do my writing.
Understand, that's, that's outstanding. Board members, any questions? Comments? Ms. Lawheed, Teacher of the Year?
I just like being around kids. Thank you so much for sharing your books. Books are so important. I spent, like, two hours reading yesterday, and it's so important to be reading all of the time. You can learn so many things from books, and it was nice. Did you get to miss school for this?
A little bit. A little bit. They were celebrating doing the run from where we parked here. They're going to be more exciting going back, right?
Well, I've heard a number of themes, and the last theme that I heard was Mr. Lonzo's the best principal, is that right? Anybody disagree, kids? No? Best principal. Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Thank you all. [applause]
Next item on the committee, the whole agenda is the presentation of the Top 10 &amp; 10 Strategic Education Plan. This presentation provides additional survey results on the Top 10 &amp; 10 Strategic Education Plan, and continues discussion with the Board regarding Top 10 Goals. This presentation is one of a series of presentations that will be followed by a discussion. Here to present to us this morning are Ms. Sheila Alice, Chief Deputy Superintendent, and Ms. Kelly Siciliano Carter, Director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Implementation. There will be a PowerPoint presentation, and again, followed by a discussion. Ladies, good morning, welcome.
Good morning, thank you, Dr. Rice. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity for Mrs. Carter and I to continue our monthly presentations on the Top 10 &amp; 10 Strategic Education Plan Review Process. Our agenda for this morning includes sharing with you highlights from the Top 10 Review Process Presentation that we made to the State Board of Education last month during your State Board meeting. We'll also be sharing with you additional analysis of survey results, and then we'll pivot this, our presentation to Dr. Rice, so that he can continue his conversation with you about potential changes to the Top 10 Plan. So, beginning with highlights from last month's board meeting. You may remember that at that time, we shared with you that the Michigan Department of Education launched a statewide survey on January 9th. We closed the survey on February 7th, and during that one-month time period, we collected just shy of 12,000 survey responses. Responders were asked to select the role or roles that each represented as they were completing the survey. And responders had the opportunity to select one role or multiple roles. On the slide, you see the 13 roles that were available to the responders. And after each of the roles, you'll see the percent of responders that selected that role. The percent is influenced by the opportunity that responders had to select more than one role. So when you look at the sum of the percentages, you'll see that it exceeds 100%, because responders could select more than one role. In November, December, and January, we engaged in 47 separate interviews. Those interviews were one-on-one interviews, as well as small group interviews. During those interviews, we gathered information from the individuals on potential goals to the Top 10 &amp; 10 Plan. And what we generated from those interviews was 16 potential goals, and you see those goals listed on this slide. Those goals were part of the survey. We wanted to test them in the survey, and we asked the responders to do two things. We asked, one, rate the level of importance of each of those goals, and then we asked responders to rank their top five goals. We also gave responders an opportunity to provide additional or other goals, if they didn't see goals on, on the 16, that reflected what they believed should be included in a goal, as a goal in the Top 10 Plan. At the end of the survey, responders had an opportunity to share comments with us, comments that they wanted the Department of Education to know. And so next, we're going to go into a deeper analysis of these results, and I'm going to turn the presentation to Mrs. Carter.
Thank you, Mrs. Alice. So I am here to dig a little deeper into the survey results, as Sheila provided just an overview of some of the information we shared with you last month. Based on some of the questions that you asked, we've examined this a little further, and we're going to start with the roles, and then determine, looking at what goals those roles thought were the most important. So on the left, you're seeing the roles, and as you move to the right, you're seeing what is most important for that role for each of the goals. So we're going to, on the screen, you'll see, we're going to step it through. So the first one that they stated was very important was related to nine of the 13 stated that adequate and equitable funding was very important. So as we move to the next one, you'll see nine of the 13 said that addressing teacher's shortage was very important. And then also, you'll see that there's some more that are related to adequate and equitable funding, and then quality instruction for all students. Moving to the third, 11 of the 13 selected that quality instruction for all students was very important. The fourth, we have a mix of meeting the needs of the whole child, and then improving literacy achievement, and again, addressing teacher shortage. And the last one, we have about five of literacy, four meeting the whole child, and then a few others. So hopefully, this is a great snapshot to you of where those, those roles thought were the most important goals. Okay? You also asked, asked last month about demographics, and you wanted to know specifically if we could know where respondents were from. So on the survey, we asked for the residential ZIP code. What we did was we looked at the MASA regions, and then we compiled the ZIP codes within a region. So on the left is the map for the MASA regions, on the right are the number of respondents per region. What's exciting with this is you're seeing that we had representation from the entire state within the survey. I just want to note, you'll see non-Michigan ZIP code responses, where we had about 350. Those were individuals who either didn't give us a ZIP code or were from out of state. Okay? Next, we compared how the goals then were ranked within the region. On the left, you're seeing the regions that I just mentioned, and then as you move to the right of those, you'll see how the respondents ranked the top five potential goals. So the top-ranked goal, as you can see from the slide, almost every region selected adequate and equitable funding as their top choice. The second-ranked goal were almost all addressing teacher shortage. The third, all of them ranked quality instruction for all students as the number three-ranked goal. The fourth-ranked goal was for the most part, improving literacy, and you're seeing a little bit on the whole child, and then the fifth goal is almost all meeting the needs of the whole child. I'll mention through that. Okay? As Mrs. Alice mentioned, there was an opportunity to write in other goals. I mentioned this last month, that over 5,000 people chose to write in other goals. In fact, they wrote in over 11,000 other goals. So a team at MDE reviewed all of the writing goals, and then what we did was we tried to determine if those goals fit within the 16 that Sheila outlined with, to earlier in the slides, or were there additional categories that we needed to add and to share with you for consideration. What we found was about half of the writing goals were within the 16 that we had already identified. And then just under those half, what we did was, we felt they fit within these new categories. So what you're seeing on the table, on the slide, the table has about seven other categories, and I wanted to spend a little time just expanding on a few of those. So for example, teacher support, they related to increased teacher pay, increased support in classrooms, reduced teacher evaluations, and improved professional development. That's what we felt were the most common items underneath teacher support. When individuals talked about curriculum, we were seeing narrow curriculum recommendations, those were really specific changes to curriculum. So talking about a certain curriculum and what changes they'd like to see. Mental health were specific statements around mental or social and emotional learning for all children and/or students. And lastly, I just wanted to mention, so around the topic of testing, we most often read that people thought there was too much testing, or that they wanted changes to standardize testing. So hopefully, that gave you an idea of some of the categories and why they were added. And then lastly, I just wanted to talk about those 2,900 comments that we received. Again, a team of MDE staff reviewed all 2,900 open-ended comments. You received those in your board briefs last Friday in the raw comment format. So talking about a certain curriculum and what changes they'd like to see. Mental health were specific statements around mental or social and emotional learning for all children and/or students. And lastly, I just wanted to mention, so around the topic of testing, we most often read that people thought there was too much testing, or that they wanted changes to standardize testing. So hopefully, that gave you an idea of some of the categories and why they were added. And then lastly, I just wanted to talk about those 2,900 comments that we received. Again, a team of MDE staff reviewed all 2,900 open-ended comments. You received those in your board briefs last Friday in the raw comment format. And on the slide, you're seeing some of the themes that we identified through those comments. Increased teacher pay, smaller class sizes, again, too much testing, especially in elementary students, allowing creativity and innovation in teaching, the need for certified librarians in every school, and lastly, an increase in CTE in trade schools. These are just some of the themes. There were, again, a lot of comments that you all can review from what was given to you on Friday. So next, I'm just going to pass it back to Mrs. Alice for our next steps.
Thank you. Next steps. Mrs. Cicliano-Carter and I will be back next month for another presentation on the Top 10 and 10 Review Process. At that time, we're going to have a conversation with board members on the components in a revised plan, such as mission statement, vision statement, guiding principles, and then continuing the discussion on potential goals for the plan, and also identifying metrics to go along with those goals, to ensure that we have metrics that allow us to monitor the progress in achieving the goals that you determined are important to include in the plan. So that is our plan for next month. We appreciate the opportunity to present this information to you this morning, and now we will open it up for discussion and pivot the presentation to Dr. Rice.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments of board members? Questions or comments of board members? Ms. Ramos Montini.
Thank you for the document. It's very well put together. It doesn't have a page. Okay, the survey results on the fourth goal, important goal four, when they talk about meeting the needs of the whole child, what are they referring to?
So when we looked at the interviews, the range was, could be around any of those components within the whole child WISP model. So it could be related to social-emotional learning, it could be related to mental health. At that time, it wasn't, when we were combining all of them in 16, when we did, when we selected that one of meeting the whole child, we thought about the WISP model, and Sheila, maybe you can help me a little bit with that.
Looking at the physical wellness, looking at health, nutrition, beyond academics, social-emotional wellness.
Yeah.
Those are the multiple components of whole child.
Yes. Okay, I guess those are the umbrellas, and then there's a lot of other factors that go. What I was thinking is things that we have discussed, like the wraparound services with maybe health, dental assistance within the school. We were talking about other wraparound services, psychologists, like social workers, all of those things that wrap around the academic portion. And I just wondered if they were thinking the same thing that we have been talking about.
Those were the type of responses that we received to the question, what do, what would you like to see as potential goals in a revised plan?
So specifically, those are some of the things that they were thinking about, too?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Other board members? Other board members? Ms. Fecto.
I think these are great responses, and I, you know, they reflect a lot of what I hear. Again, my only concern, and I voiced it last time, was there might be small groups of students that might get lost in looking at what the majority of people think. And I'm wondering how to ferret those out. I think about the English language learners. I think about, you know, some people, you know, minority students and the expulsion, suspension rates. I think about special education, that it might affect a smaller group, but they're really important for us to consider. And so when we look at what the majority want, I think that's good to have that understanding and base that. But I'm wondering how these other issues, which could be, you know, cause complaints, lawsuits, things like that, looking at Flint and what's happening there, and how do we make sure that those priorities, but for a narrower group of people affected, get considered?
If I may respond? Two things. I think, one, when we look at the response, that the one goal that says quality instruction for all students, and when I think about all students, I think about all the subgroups. So I think about gender, and I think about ethnicity and race, and I think about EL students, and students with special needs, and other groups of students, so that we're not excluding, but we're including all students to ensure that all of their needs are being met. And I also think it can be met under the heading of whole child, when we look at, what are the aspects that students' needs need to be met in order to be academically successful? Nutrition, health, physical wellness, as well as social and emotional wellness, and support services that are available to students, so that all of their needs are being met.
So when we look at what comes under those categories at some point, that could be incorporated?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you very much. Other board members? The board members? Ms. Tilly? Dr. Pritchett?
I think this was really good. One thing that stands out to me is the survey results ranked by regions. And Region 10, Detroit, their goals kind of, they were lockstep with everybody else, lockstep with everyone else, but the increasing support for students of color, which could embody, of course, literacy. Mostly, everybody else chose literacy there. But just recognizing that they feel like that's such a barrier for them to increase or improve literacy. So, and that goes back to the achievement gap and everything. It just really stood out to me. So just wanted to comment and bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. I appreciate the way you have taken different groups and shown us, you know, how they have ranked or gave you feedback on the goals. To no surprise, the adequate and equitable funding obviously is rising to the top in every piece, and we all know that then that could be filtered down to address these other goals. And I don't want to get too far in the weeds, because I know these are goals and not objectives and action plans, but it's the influence on the adequate funding. I just want to remind everybody, and I know everybody around this table, and then the department understands, that we don't have direct control over that. So we certainly need to advocate for it. But I do think this, again, points us in that direction here in Michigan in particular. I had an opportunity yesterday, again, for another reason, to be reviewing Dr. Arson's report. And when I read that Michigan is dead last, or at least it was when he compiled that information, it just makes everything so much clearer on why we are in the state we are, because then that filters into the addressing teacher's shortage. And sometimes people want to say, well, it's, you know, people just want more money. It is so much more than that, because it is the resources that provide the support also for the students that makes the difference. But again, I appreciate it being broken down this way, because I think it strengthens all of these goals to say, this was not just as, Michelle just indicated, one group who happened to have more survey results in than another group. This kind of seems to be right across the board. So, thank you.
Dr. Pritchett was referring to Dr. David Arson's report out of MSU from January 2019, which noted that from 1995 to 2015, Michigan, last in the country in total revenue growth, inflation-adjusted, during that 20-year period of time, one of only two states in the country to be negative in inflation-adjusted revenue growth during that period of time. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Snyder?
Notice, Region 1 is the only one that doesn't include improving literacy, or one of the only ones, but they include expanding secondary learning opportunities. What does that encompass?
Expanding secondary learning opportunities could be such things as expanding AP, NIB courses and programs. It could be expanding CTE programs, expanding dual enrollment opportunities, early-middle college opportunities.
And then also, just as like a general observation, that most regions, just whole child is at the bottom of the goals. So I know Lupe's question was good in terms of what do they mean by whole child? What do we mean when we talk about it? I think it'd be good to make sure that's clear as we move forward.
Just to note that, remind us how respondents were asked to answer this question, to give us their top five?
Yes, of the 16, to rank their top five, 1 through 5.
All right. So in fact, there are 11 that weren't ranked by these people. These are all the ones that ended up in the top five?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. McMillan?
Of those that were parents, how many of them were not teachers or education partners? Or just, that was the only thing they were, were just parents?
I can get that to you in just a little while and bring it back. I didn't bring the breakdown from each of those. I want to, I don't want to give you the wrong number.
Was it substantial, or was it?
1,000 to 2,000.
Maybe 10% to 10 to 20%? Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to.
Yes, I can have that to you today.
Other questions or comments by board members? Questions or comments by board members? Hearing none. Let, I'm sorry.
I have one.
Yep.
Can I direct a question to them?
Please.
Did anyone in the people that you had working with you bring up bullying as one of the concerns?
Yes, definitely, within the comments that we received, bullying was, is one of those.
And I would put bullying under creating a safe environment for student learning.
So within the interviews, that may have been captured underneath of the whole child. And then when we were, when we had specifics, that's why sometimes it was specifically mentioned, as mental health, that's why we separated, because there were so many people who used those terms exactly that way. So that's why we split those.
Thank you for the, thank you for the question.
I'm sorry.
Please, yes.
And I'm just getting caught, trying to get caught up. But just that we brought up last time, that of course, by geography and by race, priorities can be different, or by districts, priorities can be different. So I'm assuming you couldn't break down the data.
So did you see?
We asked two questions. We asked, the responders, we asked them two questions. One, we asked them to identify the role or roles that they represented when they were completing the survey, and we asked for their ZIP codes. So we didn't ask for any other demographics about the responders.
And this is by ZIP code, or this is by region?
This is by, we took the ZIP codes, and we compiled the ZIP codes by MASA region.
But you do realize that regions, I just know my region is...
Correct. But there were, there were 1,000 different ZIP codes.
Okay.
It's amazing how many ZIP codes there are in the state when you start looking at it.
But the data is going to be skewed based upon, I mean, I look at a region, just the region that Saginaw is in, and that varies quite a bit, as far as the rural, urban, the type of districts that you're going to get, so.
If there was a specific ZIP code that you're interested in as well, we could look at that ZIP code. But it is thousands of ZIP codes. It was our, when we selected the opportunity for someone to choose where they lived, it was kind of that, where, we wanted to have some idea of where the respondents came from, and at the same time, not discourage people to participate in the survey. So that's why we selected a residential ZIP code. It didn't make it as clean, you're right, it does large regions, but we had hoped it would capture kind of the thought you were looking at around what, where they lived to what they responded.
How specific ZIP codes that you would like us?
I will, because I think that, did the data vary differently from the total?
Well, what's interesting, when you, on the next slide, when you, the first three are almost identical based on the region. So it's the second two that you get a little bit of variance, but those first three are very, very close base everywhere. And if we were to look at just, not even comparing the region to the, then what was ranked from last month, when we went over just kind of those basic percentages, this is very close to that with everyone combined even. So it seems to be coming very consistent.
And my point is, just that, is that, you know, if you look at my region, and I'm just bringing up mine, because it, the mixture is, to me, it's very comparable to that of the state. So sometimes, when you look at the regions, you may as well just be looking at the state. So I guess my bigger thought and issue, and I'll definitely move on, is just making sure that if we're looking at those districts that are, continue to be at the bottom of the run, are we really going to be addressing their issues? And are we able to tease that data out? That's just all that I'm trying to get to, not one particular ZIP code. I was just using my region as a, as a example.
I just wanted to add to, I did notice that with Region 7, the number-one goal was addressing teacher's shortage, where every other region was adequate and equitable funding. But I thought about, it depends on which district you're talking to, and we have no way of knowing which districts were touched and which districts weren't.
There's no doubt that it's 12,000 respondents, which is a pretty extraordinary response on the one hand, but on the other hand, over a state that has almost 10 million people, it gets diluted quickly. And the regions are pretty heterogeneous in a variety of ways. So certain discreet distinctions within region wash out when you just look at a whole region. There's no question about that. You see that in a variety of ways. You don't have any, we don't, we have a way of going into sub-region, but not, but not as finely perhaps as some people would like, or in some ways, more finely than people would like, by ZIP code rather than by city, for example. So I know, for example, that there are many different ZIP codes in a Detroit, in a Lansing, in a Grand Rapids, and so on and so forth. And so it shows you some similarities across broad regions, but it doesn't pinpoint any specific parts of the state, or any particular groups within the state, which I think was Dr. Pugh's point. Yes?
Is there a way to, using ZIP codes, to just identify, at least generally, urban, suburban, rural, and then compare the answers based on urban, suburban, rural with the ZIP codes?
Good question.
Yes.
Let's explore that and see if we can get you an answer to that.
Just thinking.
Any other questions or comments before we pivot to looking at specific goals? Okay. Last time, we explored four goals. We talked about funding, teacher shortage, literacy, and health, safety, and wellness. What I propose we do today, let's start with secondary school programs, the issue of CTE, early-middle college, dual enrollment, AP, IB. Do board members see that as a worthy goal for a Top 10 Strategic Education Plan? So I see Ms. Snyder with an early head bob. Talk to us.
I just think that's definitely something we need to consider.
Okay, all right, thank you. Others? Ms. Lahey?
When the Teachers of the Year were interviewed, we went through, we were one of those interviews, CTE came up a lot with our group, and the importance of giving kids other opportunities at the secondary level, other than AP and IB. Expanding CTE, we have, I think you called them CTE deserts, I think, in parts of the state.
Yes.
That was really important to the 10 of us, so I just wanted to...
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you for sharing that, because there are places that literally have no CTE programming. And I think to your question about what's up with region one, I think there is a concern about a dearth of programming in region one, in a lot of these areas, so.
That there is not enough.
No question, yeah, no question, and you know that well, yeah. Other, other thoughts on secondary school programming as a potential goal in a top 10 strategic education plan? Ms. Becca?
And again, I would, I think those are great goals. I sometimes wonder, like some of our kids who have more academic challenges, how that, when we say education for all, how they fit in to, to that, and if it would include, you know, also maybe improving transition programs for special ed, you know, students as well. Because it's, it sounds like you're, you're moving people into post-secondary opportunities to have, to include and have some thoughtful programs for kids who might not participate in the other ones that you just mentioned, so.
So the, the idea of transition programs being included in that overall rubric of secondary school programs, could be secondary slash post-secondary, to pick up transition programs, so that's number one. Number two, that in the metric, we would want to track by category. So that we were not simply looking at aggregate increases, but rather, are we in fact increasing our special needs children in particular types of programs? Are we increasing our children of color in particular programs? Our economically disadvantaged kids in particular programs? So that's the way we would make sure that this was not sort of hiding behind, if you will, measures of central tendency, means, medians, and modes, and, and looking at, at bringing along everyone. Okay, Ms. Snyder?
So where are we at with, you know, who's leading the effort on the teacher cadet programs? Is that going to be under the umbrella of CTE? And where is that really at?
Well, okay, so there are teacher cadet programs now, number one. They, they are generally in two buckets, curricular, a curricular bucket, and an extracurricular bucket. You see sometimes an after-school program or club with a teacher, and a number of kids who are interested in teaching as a career, so that's the extracurricular bucket. And then you see it on the curricular side, sometimes as a part of CTE, sometimes not as a part of CTE. The governor has some money in her budget recommendation, $1.5 million, to expand teacher cadet programs. We're certainly enormously supportive of that. It's part of our rebuilding of the profession, addressing the, the teacher shortage. So generally, that notion of teacher cadet programs falls both curricular and extracurricular. It would be a very small piece of CTE, very small piece. We'd like to see it be a somewhat larger piece of CTE, but CTE expands this enormous swath of, of professions, yeah. Other, other questions or comments, thoughts on this particular goal? So I heard a fair bit of support for broadly, the notion of secondary slash post-secondary programming, to pick up transition programs, as being a potential goal area. High school graduation rates. Thoughts of board members about high school graduation being a potential goal in a top 10 strategic education plan?
If we do all of these other things that we talked about well, that will increase.
If we, if we do everything well, that naturally elevates, there's no question about it. There's no doubt about it.
But you want, are you recommending or suggesting that we pinpoint high school graduation and have specific things under that goal?
While there is a defined standard for graduating in the state of Michigan, yes. If that, if that standard were, were to dissipate, then I might have a different perspective. But while there is a significant standard for a Michigan merit curriculum diploma, I would advocate for this being a goal area, yes. Other thoughts, comments, concerns?
Are we looking at both four, five, and six-year graduation rates?
We could. They are all tracked, as you're aware. They've been tracked nationally since 2008, and, and we can certainly do that. I, I lend more credence to four and five. Five and six aren't very different from one another. We can certainly track them all. But in addition to tracking across number of years, because I see little distinction between four and five, not numerically, but the point is, is that you graduate. If you take an extra year, there are some kids for whom life intrudes on life, and that they can make it through in that fifth year and move on with their life, is noteworthy, is important. We want kids ultimately to graduate from high school, not to get hung up on four years, or not four years. But in addition to graduation, we want to track for different groups of children. And so the same groups of children for whom I cited on post-secondary school, or secondary school programming, special needs children, children of color, economically disadvantaged students, we want to be able to peel back all of these statistics and annually report on them. It's not to say that these are not available currently, they are available currently, but to raise them to some level of focus, some level of attention in a top 10 plan, I think helps us drive those, those numbers. So I would advocate for a minimum of four and five year, six year, not a problem to add, and to track longitudinally how we're doing with every group of young people in the state, as part of the metrics. Other, other thoughts on high school graduation? Ms. Becca, Ms. Lahey?
Just to, it's a very small group, but do we track, or can we track kids in the foster care system? Because they have some of the lowest graduation rates.
So it's, so it's to your email. It's a, it's a really good, it's a really good question, and I'm going to, I'm going to turn to the expert on all things data, Dr. Vanessa Kiesler. Is it possible to track children who are in foster care?
Yes, we actually have a, a great program around students who are in care, that's part of the Title III work. The woman who was here is actually, works in the unit that, that works on that. Let me get you more specifics on the data we have. We have, it is a group that, while difficult to track, we also have more required reporting than we do around that group, so. The answer is yes, it's possible, and I'll follow up in writing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other, other questions or thoughts on this particular potential goal area? Ms. Lahey?
So I know that our special education people have been working on, and I don't know if this is the right place to bring this up, but alternative paths to a diploma? We, we only have one way to graduate, really. And I don't know if that's something that we're talking about or considering for our students with special needs, to get more than just a certificate?
So, so the answer is, it is an active topic of conversation. It's a part of path forward. Dr. Scott Kenicknack is just waiting to answer your question. Dr. Kenicknack?
So I would just echo your comments. It is part of the path forward, it is part of that Phase One work, and so we hope to begin moving that work between now and June of 2021, looking at the research, looking at the data, looking at how it fits in with top 10 and 10. If this becomes a goal, I think it's, there's a natural pie, a natural subset to it.
Recognizing that different parents will have different perspectives about whether they want to access that for their special needs child, but that they ought to be able to access it, is different from that they would necessarily access it. There, there will be a tug for some parents between a Michigan merit curriculum diploma and transition services after, and we've, you, you know this tug, okay. Other thoughts, was Dr. Pritchett, was that, was that you, or are you bidding on something? No, not you. Dr. Pugh?
So, you know, and this just goes to everything that I've been saying. I think, you know, grad, graduation rates are tangible, they're quantifiable, they're accessible, but of course, I would rather be able to measure what leads to graduation rate. So having it as an indicator is good, but I would, again, rather look at what are some of the things that are measurable, that tells us that we're helping our kids to get to that point of graduating, or at graduating.
This is the conversation about upstream? Okay, very good, I appreciate that. Other, other thoughts on this particular potential goal area? Hearing none, let's pivot to 60 by 30. This is the governor's goal area. 60% of adults having a post-secondary credential by 2030. And Brandy Johnson is here, representing the governor's office. Brandy, do you have anything to share on this particular metric?
I mean, other than, we were at just right around 44% when the governor made the announcement, we're now at 45.5% a year and a half later or so. So we are not moving at the trajectory necessary to reach 60% by 2030. It's a top priority of the administration and our Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity. LEO has made it a primary focus area of the department.
Okay, and LEO is?
The Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity.
Thank you very much. And, and the department is working on what Dr. Pugh would talk about in terms of upstream elements, to drive that downstream goal. So you want to, you want to share a word or two about that?
Yeah, I mean, there's a, a lot that high schools can, particularly secondary schools can do to support the 60 by 30 goal around, obviously, academic preparation, which is their, their first and foremost goal, helping students avoid remedial education in, in post-secondary, providing counseling and advising as it relates to any number of post-secondary pathways that result in a credential beyond high school, whether that's an apprenticeship, a technical certificate, and applied associate degree, bachelor's degree, and beyond. Helping schools and students with financial aid, so that they can afford post-secondary, and just being advocates for students to, to pursue education beyond that high school diploma or equivalent.
Good, thank you very much. And certainly, your, your work with MCAN is well appreciated in this, in this area. Any thoughts on 60 by 30 as a potential goal area? Yes?
Just some questions for Brandy. So, we're trying to capture young adults, right, that have already graduated too, and that's outside of our conversation, but I still, I'm just curious. Is she working with businesses that have the capacity to, you know, train them post-graduation to some degree, because they don't have the skill without the CTE programming?
Yeah, so, you know, business leaders have been the largest champions for the Michigan Reconnect program, which is being discussed right now. Michigan Reconnect would provide a tuition-free pathway through an associate degree for adults aged 25 and older, most of whom are in the workforce currently. So business organizations, chambers of commerce, have been the largest and most vocal champions for Reconnect, in order to provide the financial assistance to get those credentials. The state also has a program called Going Pro, which provides some grants to businesses to help upskill their incumbent employees.
So other, thank you very much for, for that. Any other questions or thoughts on the possibility of 60 by 30 as a potential goal area in the top 10 strategic education plan? So think about, think about, I'm sorry, Dr. Pugh?
I just have a question.
Yeah?
And Brandy, you, you kind of answered part of this with Nikki. I just want to be clear, what are the, the ages that, that we're focusing on?
So the goal is 25 to 64, because that is the workforce goal. Presumably, people between 16 and 18 and 24 are pursuing that post-secondary education. So it's, some, some, lots of folks will have their degree or certificate, but before they're 25. But 25 to 64 is, is the Rick age range for the goal. That represents working-aged adults in the labor market.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, questions, comments on the possibility of 60 by 30 being a potential goal area? President Albridge?
So I think it's fine to have it as a goal, and I think it's consistent then with what the state goal is, just keeping in mind that a lot of this is outside of our control. And, and I, I hesitate when we start getting into, you know, these goals and these metrics, that we really, there's only so much of which we can impact, and yet, we are taking on an entire goal. So I, I, that's my hesitation with it.
Fair enough. The, I'm sorry, Mr. McMillan?
I would concur with our president, and would say that, you know, going forward, it seems like with the gig economy and just things changing so rapidly with technology, that I think it's becoming less and less important to have that signal that, you know, that a degree has been for the last many decades, and that people learn on the fly, and they learn in so many different ways now, that, and agility is a big deal now, as we talk more about the importance of the arts and, and really creativity, and being able to adapt and adjust. So I don't, you know, I don't know that that particular goal would be something that would be important for future opportunities, and I, I wouldn't necessarily put that as something important.
Agility and creativity are absolutely important, there's no, there's no doubt about that. I would like to make sure that we're on the same page about a post-secondary credential, if we could, because oftentimes, you know, for many years, we oversold four-year institutions at the expense of education that took a little bit less time to attain, but nonetheless could support viable careers and, and children's dreams. So Ms. Johnson, if you, if you would please, we're not simply talking about four-year degrees, are we? We're talking about
Yep.
a wide range of different credentials?
Certifications, certificates, associate degree, bachelor's degrees, 90% of those jobs created since the Great Recession have required some type of post-secondary education. If you look at the hot jobs that our Bureau of Labor Market Information and Strategic Initiatives out of D T M B produces, really, all 50 of the hottest jobs require some training beyond high school. More than 40 of them require a credential, and frankly, 34 of the hottest 50 jobs still require a bachelor's degree or, or higher. Bachelor's degree still does provide the most insurance, in terms of being able to make a living wage, maintain employment, and have access to health benefits, which is critically important. And so I agree that, you know, you'll, the governor is very consistent around using the phrase "post-secondary credential," including a broad definition of credential to include certification through PhD. What we need fewer of are people with a high school diploma as their technical cer, as their terminal credential. If you look at, you know, ALIS data disaggregated by educational attainment, those that are struggling to make a living wage to be able to support a family are those that have a high school diploma, a GED, or less. And so it's also about a response to poverty.
So two things, because I want to make sure, because you've got a lot of information in your head, I want to make sure that
Yeah, sorry, can you tell?
We bring it in our, into our head. So why don't you define the acronym ALIS for us?
Yeah, the Asset Limited Income Constrained and Employed Population, so really, the working poor that can't afford, that, that struggle to make basic needs met, like housing and food.
And, and what you're saying is, is that this is not simply a, that 45.5% is not simply a four-year college degree metric. It's two-year, it's certificate of achievement, it's certificate, it's an apprenticeship. It's two-year, it's certificate of achievement, it's certificate, it's an apprenticeship as well?
Mm-hmm. And, and certifications, so things like IT certifications for Microsoft or, or others. We need a, we need a healthy mix, but we also need to be mindful of equity concerns that we are not sending our children to four-year universities, but encouraging those kids to participate in the gig economy or just learn on the job. We need to make sure that we're sending consistent messages about the importance of post-secondary credentialing across all populations.
Thank you very much. Dr. Pugh?
And maybe, excuse my ignorance, but is there opportunities for the parents or grandparents to pair up with K through 12 children in doing this? Are there any opportunities?
For family engagement around post-secondary planning? Is that what the question is?
Well, first of all, I, I mean, I've been seeing tons of social media posts where you have grandparents, you have the three generations of children who are going to school, grandparents
Yeah.
or parents who didn't get the opportunity to go to school, now are in school with their, their children. I mean, are there any credentialing opportunities?
Yeah.
Or, I mean, that has benefits in, in so many different ways for, for that to happen together, intergenerational.
I, that's a great question, thank you. I think that's why Reconnect is so exciting because right now, all of the student financial aid that our state invests in, this, and this lives over at the Department of Treasury, all financial aid is geared toward 18-year-olds. It's all for traditional age students. The Reconnect program will really be the only program that provides student financial aid and affordability support for working-aged adults. And so while a student may have access to, a young person might have access to a TIP scholarship, their parent or grandparent could qualify for the Michigan Reconnect where they could go to school. I completely agree that this is a multi-generational opportunity.
I remember my, my dad, my mom and my sisters, and we were in an apple where we were learning to program together. I mean, just, that's a thought that, that comes to mind.
Thank you very much. Other, other thoughts, comments, questions? Ms. Ramos-Montini?
Can we put this thought in a box and continue going through your list?
Oh, we're gonna, we're putting a lot of these in boxes. But yeah, if, if you, if you believe this
Clear aside.
if you believe this has run its course, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
You bet.
Yeah.
So number, number, fair enough. Number four, early childhood education. This is to Dr. Pugh's language, an upstream goal. 55% of our young people in the state last year, 37,140 kids, received GSRP preschool. So 55% of those eligible, eligibility at 250% of the federal poverty level. Does the board think that this is a valid potential goal for a top 10 Strategic Education Plan? So I, I hear the head bob.
I do.
Okay. There we go. So I, I've got an "I do." Other, other thoughts? Dr. Pritchett?
Absolutely. The research is so clear on this that it's almost
A must.
A must, yes. Thank you. We need to shift our focus to early childhood education. I understand there are parents in totally their choice if they choose not to take advantage or to, to send their child to a preschool, universal preschool program. Absolutely, that is their right as parent, but it needs to be available. Period.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for sharing that. President Albridge, did I, did I hear a head shake?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Ms. Snyder?
My concern is just like the previous conversation is outside of our jurisdiction, if you will. It's interesting to set a goal that's not within our constitutional authority. I don't, I don't know. It just, not that the conversation isn't being had elsewhere, but
Tell us what you mean by outside of our constitutional authority.
But early childhood, not K through 12. Aaron?
Fair enough. It, it is something that affects K-12 and by extension affects your ability later in life. There's a research base around early childhood education, which is about 55 years long and going. It's arguably one of the best economic payoffs to drive not only higher education outcomes, but higher economic outcomes later. And in terms of outside of our control, one could argue most of what we're trying to do is in some ways outside of our control, but not outside of our influence. And I draw a distinction between outside of our authority, which I might agree with you, and outside of our influence. And when you have the opportunity to put your shoulder behind important things, whether you control them or not, you ought to reflect upon, we ought to reflect upon those, I, I think. You care to reflect upon the upstream?
No, I mean, I, I think that it, that it's important. It's, it's a critical foundational step. I think we just have to be mindful and careful that it doesn't compete against some of the other urgent things that go on in K-12. And I think that that's one of the only criticisms that I, that I hear is if we're putting funding and resources there, does it hinder anything that's going on with the K-12 budget? But yes, it is a very critical, I mean, the research definitely shows that, that it's a critical foundation.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you. Anything else on early childhood education? I don't want to, I'm conscious of Ms. Ramos-Montini's exhortation to keep moving, so I'm going to keep on keeping on. If, if I don't hear anything more on that, let's pivot to health, safety and wellness. We talked about this briefly last time. There was some interesting conversation. One of the things that was raised was, so what does this mean? And the reality is, is that you can make it mean what you want it to mean. It would be your goal, it's your, it's your potential goal. You can make it reflect what you think is important in the areas of health, safety and wellness. To your question earlier in this session, we track bullying statistics in the state that could be a part of this, this goal area. So that's an example. You and I have had fairly extensive conversations about Mi-Fi data, Ms. Tilly. Dr. Pugh, we've also had extensive data, conversations about Mi-Fi data. Mi-Fi data includes physical health metrics, mental health metrics. These are survey results that, from surveys that young people take regularly. And we could track our progress as a state over a period of years in these, in these areas. Board members' thoughts on this as a potential goal area?
Of course, I'm all for it.
You want to share more?
You know, and I, and I'm not just interested in, in, again, what I would call the data that's indicator that we're getting things right, but are teachers adequately prepared to deal with trauma and stress in our, in our school systems and that they're presented with? Are we monitoring to see that absent, you know, that absenteeism isn't something more that we need to be looking at a child's physical health? So I could say more, but I definitely am eager for us to look at some of these more upstream issues that definitely impact a child showing up ready and able to, to learn and educators able to nurture and adequately educate our children, able to be in a classroom and know how to make that environment conducive for learning.
Thank you very much. Ms. Snyder?
I'll just say something quickly, I have to go move my car. But health and safety is a very broad topic, so I'm, I'll be looking forward to contributing to that.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you so much.
What's that?
Ms., Ms. Fekto?
A couple of things. One is that I hope it would include the environmental health of the school.
Right.
Including looking at the water. And, you know, my, my husband worked in a district, not the one he's in now, where he personally tested the water and found high levels of lead and other things in the water. And when we called the EQ, we were told, they were told, oh, we only come in if we're invited in by the superintendent. And that superintendent did not want the water to be known about, especially when there's all these other schools of choice when he's concerned that they're, they'll just find out this bad news and leave and then they'll lose their money. So I think there needs to be stronger safeguards to make sure that the water and the air in the school and the soil around the school is not contaminated or come up with a way to support healthy schools, mold, all of that. So I would hope that that might be included. Also, I wanted to mention about trauma. So I've raised a number of kids in the foster care system and I know that they're all very talented, many of them incredibly intelligent, more intelligent than me. But when they just shut down in school and are misunderstood, their behaviors are not easy to manage, I can attest to that. But they're, they're capable, but, but without addressing the trauma that they've gone through and knowing how to respond to their behavior, they're not going to do well academically. And, and so I, I do think, you know, a number of kids have gone, lived, especially, well, you know, I think particularly in high poverty, but everywhere, there are, there are kids that have these issues that they do directly affect their academics. And without understanding how to, you know, communicate and respond to these kids and understand them, they're, they're not going to flourish at all. So, and you could even do more damage. So like the expulsion, suspensions and things like that. So I think it's, I think looking at the whole child, I mean, I know it sounds, you know, fuzzy, but to me, it's not fuzzy. It's like, it's critical to make sure people know how to reach the potential of, of kids that have these, that have had a lot of trauma in their life. So, so that's, I think it's important. I, I fully support the goal and that's the reasons why, so.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ramos-Montini?
I, I concur. To me, these health, safety and mental is a horse driving the whole thing, the whole educational picture. Because if, if, if we capture the child's health, the, their safety and their mental capacity, we can teach, we can get to the goals that we want them to acquire. And so this is a horse driving the whole thing, so I, I am in total support. And this, then, early childhood, they would be my next, well, there's a horse and then another horse. They're very important to reach the goal. As I watch my, my two-and-a-half-year-old grandson and everything that he's learning in, in his daycare, it's absolutely phenomenal. And when my students used to come, five-year-olds, they didn't know their colors, they didn't know their numbers, they didn't know any, and here's my grandchild with all this knowledge already. It's there and we just had to, to capture it. So both of these two are just very important to me before even everything else. These two are the prime of our goals, should be.
Thank you very much. Other, Ms. Laheed?
We were just like looking at each other. We appreciate what you said, Dr. Pugh, because there's a lot of pressure on a regular classroom teacher to know how to do a lot of things that we don't have training to do. And there aren't a lot of people, my entire district has one nurse. We do have some social workers, but the elementary schools don't have counselors.
Just remind us, just, just because I, I know how big your district is, but others don't.
Bachelor.
So how many, how many students?
We have, we have three traditional high schools and one alternative high school, four middle schools, 13 elementary schools. So it's about, I think it's like 17,000.
17,000 children?
I think so, yeah.
One nurse.
And she's lovely, but she's one person. And so the trauma that our kids are in, that we're expected to see and understand and diagnose without proper supports, causes secondary trauma for your, for your teachers. And even your Teachers of the Year deal with this every day, all the time. And we, we can't expect our kids to be healthy if our teachers are suffering. Teachers are really empathetic and take on a lot of what their students are feeling. And so that makes the job even harder. So I just appreciate that this is a topic and I hope that the staff is part of the conversation like you brought up.
Thank you very much. Other, other board members' thoughts on health, safety and wellness? I hear some interest, some considerable interest in this topic. The challenge is going to be what we can measure that is of utility. Because as, as we've discussed, there are things that we can measure that aren't necessarily important and things that are important that we can't necessarily measure. So we will do the best we can with our available data sources. We may need to reflect upon the creation of additional data sources. There were things that were mentioned here that we absolutely can track in the state, do track in the state. There may be challenges with those data, but we, we have those data nonetheless. There are other things that are important that we do not track. And we need to reflect upon that as a state and decide if those are important, how we can make that happen. We don't control our own destiny necessarily in that, but again, we can advocate for, for particular things. And I don't know too many things that are more important than the, than, than the health of our young people, than the health of the people who serve our young people. So anything more on that particular potential goal area?
I don't know how many additional goals you are going to recommend, but we, I think we have enough. I want to be, I want to be successful in some measure. Now, I know that we don't have the power to change anything, but you said at the beginning, we have the influence to make a difference. That's what we have, an influence. And so, and then you don't have the resources to be able to, so I don't want to overload the, the goals so we can be successful in, in a few, not try to conquer the world.
I think that is a, a terrific benediction for this discussion for, for today. We will be back here in a month with you at our state board meeting. We will, at that time, share some more fleshed-out thoughts on goals and potential metrics for your, for your involvement, for your shaping, for your decision-making in April and May. And ultimately, we would hope that in June, that we would be able to wrap this work up with, with you. Ms. Alice, Ms. Carter, thank you so much. Great job.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
The next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is an update from the Office of Partnership Districts. The Office of Partnership Districts will provide an overview of the recent 18-month review of goal attainment, structured conferences for rounds two and three districts, as well as the results of round one RGA conferences. This presentation is informational and requires no board action. Here to present to us, the venerable Dr. William Pearson, Director of the Office of Partnership Districts. There will be a PowerPoint presentation followed by Q and A. Dr. Pearson, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to present and provide you an update on our RGAs to date. So we will start just a review of the partnership model started in 19, or 2017. So we will start just a review of the partnership model started in 19, or 2017, developed with the goal of improving achievement levels in lowest-performing schools in Michigan. And the partnership agreement is for three years, and there are three rounds, Round One, Two, and Three. And Round Two and Three began in the summer of 2018. So there were eight districts in Round One that began in 2017. District enters into a partnership agreement if one or more schools in the district achieve in the lowest 5% in the state. And the model comprises, the districts are the drivers of their turnaround process. They engage in improvement at the district level and school level, because several of our districts have more than one school that is considered a partnership school in the partnership district. And they determine their own measures for improvement and their own accountability measures. Currently, the count of partnership districts in Round One, Two, and Three are 29 districts, and there are 104 schools. So when we have a review of goal attainment, that is really the midpoint of the three-year agreement. We call it 18-month RGA. So we have a whole day, well, about five hours, that we spend with the district. And so we begin by going over the agenda, and we talk about the protocol, what we're trying to accomplish during the day. Then the district presents for about an hour and a half to two hours regarding each of their benchmarks and the evidence that they provide to us, you know, usually through a PowerPoint presentation. And then several people usually comment. The superintendent or the building principal, in the case of a PSA, usually, you know, designates several people to make comments with regard to a specific benchmark. Then after lunch, we have a collaborative conversation where MDE officials and partners can ask for clarifying answers to some of the questions they have that was presented during the presentation. And then we review the evidence for each benchmark, make a determination if a district is on track or off track. And then we have collaborative recommendations, so we provide information back to the district about what we think, you know, things are going well. A district can ask us, you know, here's the areas we think we might need some additional help. And so we collaboratively talk about recommendations so that the district can be successful at the end of their three-year agreement. And then we have promising practices. We talk about, here are the things we've heard, here is the evidence that we have seen that really you should continue to focus on, so that you will be successful at the end of the three-year agreement. And then we talk about next steps. Next steps, if you're off track, will include a 24-month review. And we've had some districts that have had a 24-month review from Round One, and we know we're going to have some from Round Two and Three when we complete those on March 26. So here are the results from Round One, going back to last year. There were eight districts. Saginaw's up there twice, because Saginaw decided to have three separate partnership agreements when they began their agreement with MDE. They had two rounds, they're in Round One and Round Two. Since then, we have combined the partnership agreements to one agreement, and that was the work of the superintendent, myself, and my office, and I think that was a good thing to do. So we had two, we had two districts, Saginaw and Bridgeport Spalding, that were off track. Saginaw then became on track after their 24-month review, because you get additional evidence after the 18-month for your local data or your M-Step data, or in high school, your SAT data. So you get more information during the spring, and then we have our 24-month review in the fall. So Saginaw was then on track. Bridgeport Spalding continued to be off track with their 24-month review. And then we tell them that they need to provide information to their community about where they're going, what might be happening. And they presented to their board, I was there. And they're working diligently to try to meet the goals at the end of their three-year agreement. So 18-month review, we've had 14 in Round Two and Three from December to last Thursday. And we have 12 more RGAs for Rounds Two and Three that will be completed by March 26. And then, you know, just to remind you again, when we conduct an RGA, you're either on track, off track with progress, or off track with limited progress. After the 24-month review, you're either on track or off track. There's only, you know, A or B. So the results of the 18-month RGA conferences for Round Two and Three so far are in front of you. And like I said, we've had 14. Seven are off track, and seven are on track. So we've listed here the number of schools that are in the partnership, and the number of schools in the district, this is the first column of numbers. And then the number of attained goals or benchmarks, since it's 18-month, are in front of you. And then the status, on track or off track, and do they need a 24-month review. And this is a continuation up to last Thursday. Like I said, seven out of 14 are on track. And I just want to, you know, look at American International Academy, you know. So it's not just about the percentage of benchmarks attained or goals attained. You know, they were 10 out of 11, but they chose to have 10 process benchmarks, and they were 10 for 10. And then they had one local outcome that they chose, and they were 0 for 1, and that makes them off track. So it looks like, well, they're 10 for 11, they should be on track, but not necessarily, not the way the metrics work. So remember, the district determines what their benchmarks and goals are going to be, and they determined that they were going to have those numbers, 10 process and one local outcome. So I want to, you know, put that out there. And also, some districts choose to have M-Step state goals, state benchmarks at 18-month, and then some choose not to, because they don't have to. They have to have an academic outcome. That can be local data, or it can be state data. At the end of the three years, in the EPA, the evaluation of partnership agreement, you have to have one state goal, but you don't have to at the 18-month. So we, after we're done with our three years, and we've gone through agreements, and we've looked at everything, we're not sure we'll have the same metrics. But I kind of like what has transpired with the RGAs that we have completed through Rounds One, Two, and Three. So I think our metrics are pretty good. I think we need to tighten up with, you know, how we write the partnership agreements in the future. I think we need to work with the districts now that we know a little bit better about what we're doing. We're better at what we're doing now than we were in the beginning. So partnership agreement next steps, conduct 24-month RGAs in the fall of 2020 for all of the districts that are off track. And incidentally, we'll also have the EPA, evaluation of partnership agreement, for eight Round One districts next fall also. And then my office has created a timeline to align districts from Round One, Two, and Three that will need partnership agreement with newly identified Round Four districts using federal and state determinations, because that's next fall. Because the index scores will come out next fall, and so the three-year cycle will be in place to identify new CSI schools for federal determination purposes. And then also, the state determination with the A to F, which is based on, if you get an F for a school, in proficiency growth in similar schools. So we have a lot of work to do, and we have to put all that together. And that is being presented to Ms. Sheila Alice and Dr. Rice, and we're working on how that might look for the future. So thank you. That's the update so far for partnership agreements and for our Office of Partnership Districts. And I would entertain any questions.
Dr. Pearson, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your work with Ms. Chapman and others on partnership district work. You mentioned process goals and product goals. If you could share perhaps an example of each, so that our board and our community understand the difference?
The process goals and outcome goals, process goals are really adult behaviors. Process goals are goals that you put in place and strategies and actions that you want to accomplish, you know, within the district. You know, it could be something as simple as, you know, the number of teachers that are being trained, what kind of staff development are, you know, they receiving, you know, are the teachers providing information to students that go along with the goals and the curriculum that's put in place in the district? It's really adult behaviors. Outcome goals are the achievement goals in terms of local data. And that's usually NWEA, which is Northwest Educational... What's it? Okay. And then, or I-ready. So I-ready, NWA are the two that really, I think, all our districts are using. Or state outcomes, M-Step, or in high school, SAT, or the SAT for freshmen as they get prepared to take the SAT, the PSAT. So state outcomes or local outcomes. Then there's process goals that are for adult behavior. And when we do the EPA, when that is the, when we're evaluating the districts at the end of three years, then 200 points are available, and 100 will be on the process information, the systems, the adult behaviors, and 100 points are possible for outcomes.
And your bigger point was no fair simply putting down process goals. You can't. You have to have at least an outcome goal, preferably more. And we grade you on the Gestalt, not simply on process.
Yes. And when we wrote our comprehensive guide last spring, we provided to the districts an opportunity to rewrite their goals at the end of their three-year agreement, because then they had the metrics that we were going to use to evaluate whether a district is successful at the end of three years. And so we gave the opportunity to districts, and some decided that they were now going to include some state goals. Some still didn't make that determination there, you know, for their 18-month. But you must have one state outcome goal. I thought that was good, because really, districts look at, you know, their schools, and the state looks at their schools, legislature looks at schools with regard to M-Step data and SAT data more than they do NWA. Now, there's different philosophies about that, but we determined that you had to have one state outcome goal. You could have one, or you could have state outcome, you could have several local outcome goals. The metrics are really based on multiples of three. You have to be successful 2/3 of this or 1/3 of this. So I encourage districts, if you're going to have outcome goals, whether state or local, put them in multiples of three. So you can get 2 out of 3, or 4 out of 6, or 6 out of 9. So that will help the district be successful, so that they'll get the points they need to be relieved of the evaluation, the partnership agreement, and be successful.
Thank you very much. Dr. Pugh?
And were those goals tied to the, it was with the funding, what, the 21?
21-H, 21-H, you had to do a comprehensive needs assessment, and you have to have an academic goal. It doesn't say you have to have a state outcome goal. My office decided that we wanted to add, have to have a state outcome goal at the end of the three years.
Okay. And then going back to the example that you gave us, the 10 out of 11, can you tell me again what that was about?
Well, it looks like they're off track, that district.
Right.
And so you think, and you see 10 out of 11 goals they met, how could they be off track? That's because they had 10 process goals, and they were 10 for 10. One local outcome goal, and they were 0 for 1, and that made them off track.
So that's why you said 2 out of, or do threes. That would have been an example where, okay.
We will be much better in Round Four, working with districts. I believe that, well, let me just say it this way. We're going to narrow the focus of how you're going to identify, if you're a Round Four district, how you're going to identify your benchmarks and your goals, not only multiples of three, but we're going to work with you, the district, on, I think that we need to change it. You must have a process, some local and some state combination. So we're still working at it in our office at what's best, and we haven't come to any conclusion yet, because we haven't been through, you know, an EPA yet.
The department has learned a great deal in the first three rounds, which were really tightly packed in. And there's been a lot of learning that's taken place. There'll be additional learning that will take place as well. Adult process is important. Ultimately, children's outcomes are what we're about. We have to be about what kids leave us with, not simply with what adults leave us with. We are means to our children, to our children's ends, if you will. Please. I'm sorry. Dr. Pugh, Mr. McMillan, I beg your pardon.
I'm all at Tom, go first. I already asked the question.
Okay. Mr. McMillan?
You said, you know, we're about student outcomes. Is that real, is that just a, ultimately, is that a test? A state test?
It, well, it isn't simply a state test, but it is in part a state test. And you can talk about, if you would, some of the other student outcomes that aren't state tests, but nonetheless...
NWEA, and, yeah, he mentioned those.
NWEA, but also chronic absenteeism. They want, you know, a lot of our districts have a concern with chronic absenteeism, and they should. So they put that as one of their benchmarks or goals to increase, and they determine the percentage that they want to meet. You know, student suspensions out of classroom or out of school. We have a lot of goals and benchmarks that are based around that. And that, you know, gets us into the whole thing of social, emotional learning, the trauma-based, you know, professional development that's needed. So, you know, we're putting a lot of activities, you know, working with the districts and using the department resources, so that we can help them provide better systems and better support to their students.
Graduation rate could be an outcome.
Yep, a few of them use that, too.
Did you say they can change their, you know, their met, their goals throughout the... I'm just wondering if there's ever discussion about, you know what? We thought this is the goal, but the unintended consequences that we didn't think about are a problem. And so we want to, we don't want to just keep that as a goal and keep having these bad... I mean, I don't know. Is there discussion about those kind of things?
Mm-hmm. Yes. We did provide that opportunity last summer, as I indicated when we wrote the comprehensive guide. So we said, okay, now you know how you're going to be evaluated. Do you want to revamp and rewrite your goals? And a lot of them did. And so that, I think that helped them, that will help them at the end when the evaluation of partnership agreement comes around. But, you know, if we allow them to change their goals, you know, every six months...
Right. No, I know.
There's a little game plan in the cadaver.
I understand. Do they interact with each other, those that are partnership districts? Do they talk about, or are you MDE facilitating that and saying, well, maybe this strategy's working over here?
Well, we have, every six months, we have a networking session and conference that we provide here in Lansing. And all the districts, you know, come up with a plethora of people, and we have specific topics that they've requested that we give, provide more information on. And they've been very successful. So, yeah, we ask them, what do you need?
At the end of 36 months, if somebody has not made the progress that is necessary, what happens then? Just briefly, I kind of forget about how that works.
At the end of 36 months, if they are not successful in meeting 130 points out of 200, then the way I have organized it and have presented is that they would need another partnership agreement. But there's also, next fall, we're going to have a new CSI determination. So therefore, in terms of, you know, the index, this year was 30.64, you know, last fall. We don't know what the number will be, but it'll be around that. So if you're below the 30.64 number, per se, you're going to be identified as a CSI school through the federal determinations. Then they ate it. Then the A to F, if you have three Fs in proficiency growth and similar schools, you can be identified CSI through the state determination. So we've got to figure out how we're going to blend all of that together. So a district could not be CSI identified next fall, but not get the 130 points. So we have to have a system for that. Or you could be released. You could gain 130 points out of the 200 for the evaluation and partnership agreement, but you are identified again as a CSI school or several schools within your district. So how are we going to determine what we're going to do with them? So we've put a plan together and it's going through the chain of command now.
But just, just, that was, as Julian Castro once said in a presidential debate, that was a lot.
Yep.
Why don't we just start with the acronym? Tell us what CSI is, because I'm betting that most people are thinking crime scene investigation.
Comprehensive support improvement. So comprehensive support, you know, through the Michigan Department of Education, through a lot of different, you know, what you think a district thinks they needed through their benchmarks and goals. What do they, and their actions and strategies that they put in the partnership agreement? What do they need to work on? So they're identified because of their scores, so then we work together in providing support.
And I guess those that are on track and doing well, I mean, what is the, the feel of those? You know, is there excitement or is there a, are people pleased? I mean, is this something that they're gonna get out of this and say they're on track, but everybody's like, well, it hasn't much changed or, I mean, is it, which I don't believe is probably the case. But I mean, is there a, how do you, what's the environment or the atmosphere of, of the schools that are mainly on track and, and maybe those that are struggling?
Glad you brought that up. I've been pleased to hear from our districts that they have gone so far, several of them that said, you know, even if we are successful on our evaluation and partnership agreement, we still would love to be a partnership district. We like working with your office. We like the people that are working with us from Michigan Department of Education. They are providing lots of information to us. Now, granted, they do like the 21H money. I mean, you know, obviously. So there's, you know, some dollars that are going into districts through the 21H funds, not near enough to make up for what is occurring in partnership districts, high poverty areas. You know, that inequity is, you know, far from where it should be. But they are saying to us, yep, you know, we knew last time that, you know, when we were identified, there was a new, a different philosophy. The partnership model that was brought in is we're gonna work together. You're gonna tell us what you need to work on. You're gonna set your goals and we're gonna work with you. So I've been pleased with the responses that we're getting, whether they're on track or off track. I've had some districts say when they're on track, you know, I hope, even though we're on track, we can still work with you. You know, and, but, you know, we'll see how it goes. But the districts, there's gonna be some districts that are identified again as a partnership district with round four. Then there are gonna be some new districts and new schools. So, yeah, there's a, there's a, there's some excitement out there when they are on track. There's a good round of applause that goes around the room and everybody is very happy for what they've accomplished. And principals and superintendents also are happy because they get to, you know, provide that information to their community and their schools that say, you know, look what we've done. And there's excitement.
So a partnership district has at least one school designated as a CI, CSI school, essentially the lowest 5%. So one school in the lowest 5%. The agreement is with the district, is not with the school, it's with the district.
Yes.
And the 21H money to which you refer, section 21H of the State School Budget Act, right?
Yes.
Okay. And it does not make up for the challenge of educating-
No.
-very high poverty, very high needs young people. In fact, without exception, these are among the poorest schools, the neediest schools in the state.
No question about it. Whether it's the facilities or whether it's because they've had to reduce so many electives and classes and teachers and teacher salaries that eventually the district collapses on itself, as you've heard me say before. And we're trying to provide resources and dollars and build the systems up in the, in the district. And, you know, we're, we're doing it. And we're doing a better job, you know, every year. I think, I can't wait for round four because I think we will have a lot of things in place to work with districts to help them out and be successful. Short of some type of differentiated per pupil dollars that, you know, hopefully is going to work and help out partnership districts and high poverty districts according to the governor's plan.
But to, to your point, adequate and equitable school funding would address much of what you're trying to address in a very different way. There's no, there's no doubt about that. Other thoughts, comments, questions?
And my point really was, was to Tom's point, and you brought some of this up, but it was really speaking to the process goals versus the output goal. Process goals are inputs that get us to the output goals. And unfortunately, because of the funding, because of the populations that we're dealing with, this is the area that I would love for us to be able to focus on. And unfortunately, a lot of the districts still, you know, the educators there are still having to focus too much, what they feel is too much of their time on those output goals. Meaning that, that they're cheating the kids of, of student council, arts and some of those other activities because they're having to just focus on making sure that they get themselves in a safe zone with those output goals so that their school doesn't shut down or they don't, you know, whatever the other consequences are. But process goals are very important. And I, I look forward to the day where we have the adequate funding and the right type of policies that allow us to, to focus there. Because if we don't look at the inputs or upstream, then, then, you know, we're, or those of us, we say garbage in, garbage out. You know, if we're not able to look at the right processes, then we're going to continue to, you know, just focus on, on passing tests versus really making sure that we have students achieving to the point where they can go on and have meaningful, full careers and futures.
Need to put systems in place before we attack the outcomes.
But, but, but this gives them the opportunity at least-
Yep.
-to, you know, be thinking about some of these things and thinking about when the world gets right.
Right.
That, that this is how we will, we will move forward.
Other thoughts by board members? Ms. Fecto, was that a?
I just, so, so the outcome goals can be graduation rates or other things, doesn't, what you're saying, it has to include one state metric? Is that anything besides the M-step or SAT? So it's gotta include the SAT and M-step? Okay. So, because otherwise, because based on the A through F, they could be considered a CSI? Is that, I didn't know the, if the legislation didn't require that necessarily, did it? It was, it's sort of, anyway. So, so, so even if they do overall well and get like the 130 out of 200, which means they may not have made adequate or made a lot of progress on the state assessments, they could still get out without making a lot of progress on the state assessment?
Yes.
On one hand, but they're gonna end up going right back in because the A through F is based on a lot of those tests.
It very well could be. But then again, with inadequate funding and, you know, with high poverty districts, you know, there are a lot of factors that are involved with those scores. But going back to the systems, to strategic plan, working with the districts so they can determine what their needs are. That's why I really like MYKIP when that is gonna be, you know, introduced so that, you know, the comprehensive needs assessments put in place. District can determine, you know, what their needs are, they can determine what their dollars are available, and then they can work with a, you know, strategic plan for their district so they can make the systems better, the adult behaviors. You know, stability, as I've talked about before, if you have a, you know, principal and a superintendent and a district principal in a school that knows what they're doing and they stay together and they work together, good things are gonna happen. That's the input, that's the processes, then the outcomes will increase. And the outcomes, you know, you know, I, I believe that, you know, if we get, if we, if we have a district where there's a high degree of non-proficient students, let's say in, you know, math, elementary, upper L math, a lot of non-proficient. If we, if we increase the number of students that get out of the non-proficient level and into the partially proficient, I think that's a success story. Because then students will have something to offer out there. So it's not always about proficiency specifically with partnership districts.
Right. No, I, I agree with everything.
Growth is the-
I'm, I'm just thinking that there's still this emphasis on these test scores, which correlate so well with poverty.
Yep.
And I'm also wondering about transients, you know, of the students and how that might, if, so if we're using test scores, how those same students might not even be there from three years from now, a lot of them, and how that factors in and is it fair? So I think the work you're doing is great. I think, I wish we could provide these types of supports and the resources to, to do this even, even more. Because it sounds like a wonderful program and much needed. I just, my only concern is, again, that it's this high stakes testing. It just never seems to go away, no matter how failed that process is. And unfair it is to poor districts, especially with the inequity in funding. Yeah.
Well, I think it's a point that Ms. Fecto makes, Mr. McMillan makes, that the, the metrics are imperfect. There, there's no, there's no question about that. They are all the more imperfect when your students are mobile or transient. And where your school is being implicitly judged or explicitly judged on children that they didn't have six months ago, eight months ago, nine months ago, there are districts that will separate out metrics. You want to talk a little bit about that?
So if, the full year equivalent?
Yes.
We have most, a lot of the benchmarks and goals are written there. It has to be, you know, full year academic, a full academic year. So the student, if they come in during the middle of the year, they won't count in terms of the, the, the score. But it never goes beyond one year. It doesn't say you have to be there two years, three years.
Two, three years span.
You know.
Yeah.
Because that can get very difficult. But we do have that in place though, in terms of the transient during the school year.
There are schools and districts that track how well they do with young people the longer they have the young people. And make the point, not, not, not hard to imagine, that the longer they have the young people, the more effective they are going to be with the, the young people. Our challenge, of course, across the state is to do well by all of our kids, not simply those who are relatively rooted. But I think to your point, it's a much greater challenge when kids are pinballing and your school didn't have the luxury of educating that child pre-K K1, 2. And now your child, now your school owns those third grade scores in a fashion. Yeah. Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. So if I'm in a district and I'm setting up my academic goals, I'm going to call them, and I heard you earlier say that you normally recommend that they come up with three, so one of those has to be the state M-step or-
But it, it could be three local outcome, three state. So that you can, you know, separate those out. So there's, there's state goals and then there's local outcome.
Okay. But can you mix them? I guess is-
No.
You can't. All right. So let's say on those three state goals then, if they take your recommendation and go with three, that they are able to meet the goal and they help write the goal, correct? It's not that MDE comes in there and says, you have to go from zero to 50 or whatever. All right. They meet those. Now we have this legislation, this A to F legislation. And in that legislation, it states that even if that happens, if there happens to be three Fs in those three areas, then they are becoming a CSI school.
That is my understanding.
All right. I, I asked that question because I wanted to make it clear that that's not something MDE is-
Correct.
-recommending or saying has to happen. But that's because of the legislation that was written and we have to follow, or MDE has to follow the statute. Okay. If they have those three state goals though, and they hit two of the three, they still could show enough progress because of this point system you have going on, that they could still get over that 130, correct? They wouldn't have to hit three of the three.
Absolutely. In fact, to get the points at the EPA at the end of three years, you have to meet one-third, 33% of your state outcome goals. Two-thirds to get the points for local outcome if you use NWEA.
Okay.
So, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because we've been thrown a couple of-
The expectation is not that you're going to meet all your goals-
Right.
-for proficiency. No. And it shouldn't be.
And I think it's important that we remember that the district does help to set those goals and it's not just MDE coming in, setting that goal for them. And I appreciate the fact that last summer you gave districts the opportunity, whether they chose to do it or not, to adjust those goals based on like, okay, here's the end criteria.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, that, and that reflection opportunity a year ago was just that. It was to Mr. McMillan's question, Dr. Pearson, to your response, that this is a new process. School districts are learning, we're learning, and there were things that had been learned in the preceding year and a half, year, year and a half. We wanted to reflect upon those. We didn't want constantly changing goals, which would have been a series of non-goals.
Right.
But one opportunity in the midst of this 36-month period, the first of these 36-month periods, to reflect upon these goals and to say, you know what? Perhaps in retrospect, we should have created a second outcome goal or a third outcome goal to go with the first of the outcome goals. So it was really a, sort of a one-time, if you will, a one-time opportunity.
It was a one-time. As a past superintendent, if I didn't know what the metrics were, I was gonna be evaluated on and then I set goals, why shouldn't I have the opportunity now that I know the metrics to say, okay, I might want to revamp? I thought it was a fair thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
Any other thoughts or comments for, for us on this topic? Hearing none. Dr. Pearson, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Time is now 11:52 and a quorum of the board is present. Regular meeting is reconvened. As you're aware, my annual evaluation is on the agenda this afternoon according to section 8A of the Open Meetings Act. Public officer can request a closed session to consider periodic personnel evaluation. Therefore, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session followed by a roll call vote. President Albrecht.
I move that the State Board of Education convene in closed session at the request of Dr. Michael Rice, Superintendent of Public Instruction, in order to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of the Superintendent of Public Instruction as provided in section 8A of the Open Meetings Act.
The move. Do I have a second? Support by Dr. Pugh, I thought. I'm sorry, Ms. Snyder, Dr. Pugh, on top of one another.
I'm ready to launch.
Roll call vote.
Fecto?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Passes.
Motion passes. Board will reconvene in open session in this room at approximately 1:15 PM. Board members, please pick up lunch, then proceed to the runcle room for the closed session.
It's watch right?
Oh, really? It's time to watch.